Okay, why aren't these meetings on television?
It's called the July 21 regular council meeting for the year 2020 order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and we have indication by Pastor Tim Compton, all by the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this time we can be together here and I do thank you for these individuals who have volunteered their time to represent the city and to look out for the concerns of the citizens and I just thank you for their willingness to do this and I pray you'll give them wisdom tonight. We live in a world today that truly needs your wisdom. We need your understanding and decisions have to be made and so we just pray that you will direct and guide in each life here tonight. And I do pray that they will look to you for wisdom and understanding and I pray that we will have a sense of peace and tranquility where we can exercise our freedoms that are given to us and that we hold so dearly. Thank you for the land we live in. Thank you for the government we have that is so sensitive to our needs and I pray that we'll always do all we can to be good citizens of this country, of this city, of this county. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Trucca.
Poe.
Here.
All set.
Here.
Before you are the minutes from the July 7, 2020 regular meeting. Do they have any questions on them? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Also before you are the minutes from the July 15, 2020 public hearing. Anybody have any questions on them?
Motion to approve second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Communications amputations, we have several.
Yes, we've got eight communications amputations. Um, both communications, some of these just need to be accepted and filed and some of these need to be referred. Uh, the first one is from former councilperson Candace Yocum. I read this into the record two weeks ago. I'm not going to read it again, but as we now have a full council, um, here we need to accept and file that communication.
Okay, the motion to accept and file, uh, letter from Ms. Yocum.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a letter here from, uh, Chris Luthold of, um, 437 California Avenue, Findlay, Ohio, dated July 4. Uh, today, July 4, 2020 is exactly 100 years since my dad was born. As a tribute to him, I am donating $100 to 100 places. Russell B. Luthold was born on July 4, 1920, in Crawford County, Ohio. He graduated from Mount Zion High School, now part of the Winford School District in 1936, and later from Ohio Northern University and the Ohio State University. Russ began his teaching career at Fayette High School in Fulton County in 1946 before being named the superintendent of schools at Ayersville Local Schools, Defiance County, in 1956. After retiring in 1983, he became a professor at Defiance College, retiring again in 1998. Died for the Lord first at Fayette Christian Church, then at Defiance Church of Christ, and finally at Parkview Christian Church. Although he died in 2007, his legacy lives on in thousands of former students, colleagues, and friends. If possible, please apply this donation to the maintenance and care of Home Middle Park, where I have enjoyed many Luthold family reunions. Sincerely, Chris Luthold, 437 California Avenue, Findlay, Ohio. And that donation was for $100. Uh, this needs to be accepted and filed.
Before we vote on that, I've got a question, uh, to ask of my colleagues here. Um, I don't know whether the right thing to do would be each of us individually reach out, uh, to Mr. Luthold as a thank you or if we should do that collectively on council letterhead. I just wanted to say that I think that this deserves a...
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you, Lieutenant.
Todd, would you be able to draft a thank you letter that we can all sign on Thursday?
Yeah, I will just check to see that the administration has not done that. I received this from, uh, Mr. Weigand.
Even if they do, I think coming from council, I'd like to say that I thank you. I think this is legal.
Yep. Okay.
Sorry. I'll motion to approve, uh, or to accept and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, we have, um, a letter here from, uh, Chris Gasteris, um, dated July 8, 2020, um, regarding the North Alley Loop closure. To whom I remain concerned, I, Chris Gasteris, owner of Low Athens, have been inconvenienced over the closure of the North Alley Loop along with several other businesses on the 300 block of North San Dusk Avenue for two months now, and nothing is being done about widening the alley. You have shut down a local roadway and landlocked two businesses that have over 300-plus cars and delivery trucks a day coming through our lot that now have no point of exit. It has caused major traffic problems for customers that have to turn around while avoiding drive-through traffic from smokies to delivery trucks that have to blindside back onto State Route 4. This is all over the fact that a vehicle struck the hometown garage building, put a small dent in it, and the owner has complained to the city that the alley needs widened. The alley has been used by cars and delivery trucks for over 50 years and now it's a problem. Question mark, now it's a problem. My building gets hit at least once a week by cars that park too close to the north wall of my business. Both of my new entry doors have been vandalized by people trying to break in. Also, my new outdoor tables are being damaged already from kids and drunks walking on top of them at night. I never complained to the city because there's not a whole lot you can do about it. All I have to say is welcome to being a business owner. The problem at hand is not the width of the alley. It is not Pronger's, the city Visirus, Smokies, or Low Athens problem. However, there is however, a simple solution which is as follows. There is only two ways a truck or trailer or a box truck can strike that building. One, coming in the wrong way and swinging too close to the building causing the bumper or the front corner of that trailer to strike it. Two, trying to make a right turn coming out of the alley, which can cause the trailer to strike it. One, the city needs to post two signs, a wrong way, which they already have in place, and on the other side coming out of the alley, a left turn only sign. Two, proper policing of the situation. This is more of the business owner's responsibility than it is local law enforcement. He needs to install a camera on the corner of this building. This is the only way he will be able to get reimbursed for future damage, whether it's from a truck or a civilian vehicle that caused it. The problem he is having is he has no idea who caused the damage. Trust me, he will get reimbursed if a truck causes the damage. I was a truck driver for 15 years and the biggest expense of all trucking companies was paying for damage caused by their fleet from accidents to utility poles and lines and of course, damage to buildings. After all that has been said, if I don't see a concrete crew and a backhoe down there tomorrow, then the alley needs to be reopened immediately. I don't want to sound threatening, but if my business continues to be landlocked over a scuffle between the city and a mechanic, then I will be forced to seek legal counsel. That is all. I hope that you consider my suggestions on how to resolve this issue. Thanks sincerely, Chris Gasteris. And just as an aside, you'll see in the sort of safety director's report, this topic is mentioned. Uh, this needs to be accepted and filed.
Motion accept and file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, we have a letter here from Visirus Tourism and Visitors Bureau dated, uh, July 10, addressed to the council president, um, Visirus City Council. President Frank Hauser with the resignation of Candace Yocum from the Visirus City Council that effectively removed her as the city council representative to the Visirus Tourism and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. We are writing to you to request a replacement appointment to complete the term ending December 31, 2021. Respectfully, Kevin Myers, President, Catherine Volk, Vice President, and this needs to be referred to the Economic Development Committee.
Need motion to refer this to Economic Development, also a motion to accept and file it.
So moved.
On both.
Second to both.
All in favor, Sean?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, we have a letter here from the City Traffic Commission. This also has to be referred and, uh, accepted and filed. It is dated July 14 of this year, addressed to the, uh, City Council's Health and Safety Committee. Uh, dear Health and Safety Committee, the City Visirus Traffic Commission would like to recommend two amendments to the traffic control map. One, to add two stop signs on South Lane Street, around Solier Street, on the southeast and northwest corners. Two, to add no parking on the north side of River Street from Tiffin, to, from Tiffin Street to Perry Street. Sincerely, Jeffrey Sir Traffic Commission, and you'll see the, uh, relevant portions of the traffic map attached, and that has to be referred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Motion for that to Health and Safety, also accept and file.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, Sean?
Aye.
All opposed?
We have a letter here from the Patrol Order Police, Ohio Law Number 68. This is dated July 19. It is addressed to the citizens of Visirus from the EOP and is also CC to the city administration and city council. Citizens of Visirus, greetings from the dedicated members of Visirus Patrol Order Police, Lodge Number 68. We are saddened to announce the annual cruise with the cops, uh, scheduled for the, for September 5, 2020 has been canceled. Our members sincerely enjoy working with our community on this special event, and we are always excited when it rolls around each year. Unfortunately, COVID-19 put us in the hostile position of balancing social interaction with the virus's undeniable infectious nature. With this in mind, we made the decision to remain cautious and vigilant in protecting our participants and visitors from contracting coronavirus. We are truly sorry for any disappointment this might cause, but thank you for all your continued support and understanding. Please make plans for June 12, 2021, which is the next cruise with the cops. Sincerely, R. Thomas Walker, President, Visirus Patrol Order Police, Incorporated Number 68. And you'll notice that that legislation to close the streets, which was up for a second reading, has been pulled from the agenda. That needs to be accepted and filed.
Motion accept and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We have a letter here from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, dated, uh, dated July 17, uh, directed to the, uh, mayor, and it is regarding, uh, final verification of flood damage reduction regulations. Dear Mayor Reser, this letter is in regard to the amendment to City of Visirus's flood damage prevention regulations, which amended ordinance number 26, 2010, passed on June 8, 2020. In accordance with Section 1521.18 of the Ohio Revise Code, our office has reviewed the adopted regulations for compliance with minimum national flood insurance program standards as authorized under the National Flood Insurance Act of 1968. The adopted regulations are compliant with minimum NFIP. Your regulations now only incorporate higher standards for free board for residential structures. With this letter, I will forward your complaint, your compliant regulations and supporting documentation with ODNR verification to FEMA Region 5 offices to complete your regulations update process. Feel free to contact me at 614-265-6709 or by email at katherine.geithler@dnr.state.us with any questions. Sincerely, Catherine Skalak Geithner, EISDFM, Senior Environmental Specialist, Flooding Management Program, Division of Water Resources, and, um, the council clerk, the zoning administrator, the law director, and the NFIP were all perfect copy on that. Uh, that needs to be accepted and filed as well.
Motion accept and file.
So moved. So back.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This last letter came in after the deadline for letters. I'm going to ask if we have a motion to waive the council rules.
Read it. So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, this last letter, um, came, uh, yesterday, July 19. It's from Karen E. Watson, 4455 Denzport Road, Columbus, Ohio. It's addressed to city council and city leaders. Dear members of Visirus City Council and elected city officials, I am writing this letter to voice my concerns with the city's contracted ambulance service, Portsmouth Emergency Ambulance Service Inc. We are in a global pandemic with COVID-19. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, has provided very clear guidelines about the use of PPE and the implementation of universal source control measures to be taken by EMS personnel. The following information was found at www.cdc.gov. First responder guidance updated July 15, 2020 includes recommendations for EMS personnel. EMS employee responsibilities described in this document are for the care and transport of all patients and not just those suspected of having SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID-19, COVID-19. Section 1, recommended infection prevention and control, IPC practices for routine healthcare delivery during the pandemic. Recommendations for EMS personnel. Implement universal source control measures. Source control refers to use of face coverings to cover the mouth and nose to prevent release of respiratory secretions. Source control measures are recommended for everyone due to the potential for asymptomatic and pre-subdramatic transmission. EMS personnel should wear a face mask at all times while they are in service, including break rooms or other spaces where they might encounter COVID-19. Face masks are preferred over cloth face coverings for EMS personnel. Patients should be wearing their own cloth face coverings prior to arrival of EMS personnel and throughout the duration of the encounter, including transport. If they do not have a face covering, they should be offered a face covering as supply is allowed. On June 25, 2020, 911 was called to the home for a family member. When the Portsmouth EMS personnel arrived, none of them were wearing face masks. They did not offer the patient a cloth covering. They completed their initial assessment at the scene and transported her to a Vita Hospital, Visirus. At no time during this process did any of the EMS personnel place a face mask on themselves or my family member, the patient. On June 26, 2020, this same family member was transported by Portsmouth Emergency Ambulance Service Inc. from a Vita Hospital Visirus to a Vita Hospital Gallium. Their transport crew included two EMTs who were not part of the crew on December 25, 2020. Again, neither EMT was donating any sort of face covering during pickup at a Vita Visirus or while en route, nor was the patient offered a face covering. Over the course of two days, my family member was put in arms right by five different people the city has entrusted to care of. The stress a person and his or her family goes through during normal times when emergency, when emergency medical services are needed is high. The citizens of this community do not need the added stress from medical personnel who choose not to follow the recommended guidelines, especially during a global pandemic. As follow-up to this situation, I reported the incident to the Crawford County Health Department, the Ohio Department of Health, and Portsmouth Emergency Ambulance Service, Inc. Compliance Department. I wrote a message for the mayor of Visirus and Visirus Service Safety Director, Jeff Weigand. Mr. Weigand returned my call stating my name and number will be given to Kurt Frankhauser, City Council President, and Kevin Myers, Health and Safety Committee Chair. I spoke with Mr., with both Mr. Frankhauser and Mr. Myers and voiced my concerns. I am writing this public records document to be read at the next Visirus City Council meeting and ordered that all council members, elected city officials, and Visirus area residents are made aware of the incidents that occurred on June 25 and June 26, 2020 with regard to Portsmouth Emergency Ambulance Service, Inc. EMT is not adhering to CDC guidelines or the ambulance services policy set forth during this global pandemic. As the contract for this ambulance service is nearing its end, I ask that Visirus City Council members and city leaders do their research in order to secure safe and reliable medical emergency services for the citizens of this, of this community. While I do not reside in Visirus, I have family members and many friends who do. Therefore, I too am impacted by the decisions made by city council and other elected officials. The citizens of this community deserve quality care from people who will adhere to the medical guidelines to keep everyone safe. To the citizens of Visirus, voice your concerns and opinions. If you see something, say something. Council members and elected officials need to hear from you. To the council members and elected officials, listen to the residents of this city. They have entrusted you to make decisions for the greater good of all who reside here. Respectfully submitted, Karen E. Watson. Um, the ambulance service topic is an open project in both health, safety, and finance. It continues to be, and this letter does need to be accepted and filed.
Motion accept and file.
I have a comment first. I would like, uh, from a colleague, your, uh, permission to forward this to the ambulance board president as well as the ambulance provider and ask for explanation to be given.
I'll agree to that.
Absolutely.
I think that'd be a, a good, uh, start.
I'll take care of that.
You want, um, okay, how can I ask you? You want to have votes? Do you have to...
It's, it's your call.
Want to?
Yeah. The motion to...
Motion.
...the letter?
I'll motion that. Somebody can second me.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Need motion accept and file the original letter?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, green permission for visitors to speak. Is there anybody that would like to speak?
Well, I'm here.
I'm much well.
We've missed you.
Robert Taylor from Willow Clums Street. Uh, first of all, I just like said, I'm glad to see that none of you are wearing masks other than our mayor. Uh, and that's personal choice and that's really what this is about to me. And that letter there is a prime example of what's going to happen in this country. People who don't even live here trying to dictate their will on our residents. Now, for Portsmouth Ambulance Service, they ever show up at my house, I'm not going to have a mask on and I don't want them in my house with a mask on. Could be to move on and play and I don't care. Life has risk. And I've noticed that we've passed a couple resolutions here, here recently. The first, the last one, uh, was for, uh, supporting, uh, police department. No issue with that. You guys jump right on the resolution or the letter to support an income tax for the council on aging. Now, six months ago, I was looked at as some conspiracy theorist and radical right-wing nut job for talking about the Second Amendment and constitutional rights. And I got very little support from city council. And you look at what's going on in this country now. It's not here. Cause we live in a small town, uh, close in the community. And most of the residents here do support our police. But most of the residents here too support the constitution. And I'm just, I'm offended that realistically, only two people on council stood up to send a message to the state government about our constitutional rights. And you look now at what our government is doing at the Capitol Building. They're trying to mandate, he's going to mandate masks. He's going county to county, which if you look at the Ohio Constitution, is illegal anyway. Cause you cannot, you cannot separate legislation like that, county to county, from the state level. But it's a bigger principle thing. Our constitutional rights are being infringed and it starts on local level to finally stand up and say enough is enough. And I'm going to say it, even though I have zero faith that it will ever happen out of this council, since you're so happy and so willing to pass resolutions and clearly wearing a mask among council members, if you don't want to, and I agree with you, you shouldn't have to unless it's your personal choice, I'd like to see a resolution from city council for an anti-mask. But that's how you feel. That's how our most of the people in your city feel. And that's really all I got to say. Cause like I said, I feel offended that nobody took into consideration constitutional rights six months ago, and now you're all exercising them. And that's all I got to say. You guys have a good night.
Any other visitors that would like to speak? Okay, we're going to move on. Standing committee reports. Starting with Economic Development, Mr. Vogt.
Visirus City Joint Regular Committee meeting for Thursday, July 9, 2020. Uh, members present were Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, James Mead, Bruce Trucca, Lisa Allseth, and myself. Up first, Visirus City Joint Regular, Regular Committee meeting was called to order by myself at 6:00 PM. Uh, number two, public participation. Council clerk read a letter from Ward to councilperson Candace Yocum, received earlier in the day, announcing her resignation from council over concerns about the manner in which council meetings have been conducted during the coronavirus pandemic. The Crawford County Democratic Party has been charged with appointing a replacing, uh, appointing a replacing to fill out the remainder of Yocum's term, which expires on December 31, 2021. Council will accept and file the letter during its next regular meeting on July 21. Third, order committee business. Up first, Economic Development Committee, uh, was called to order at 6:04 PM. Um, we had, uh, Ms. Karin Stein and, uh, Mr. Gary Frankhaus here from the Crawford County Partnership and for education and economic development. Um, they gave a short presentation about what they're doing, um, what they're using our $50,000 a year for to promote our community and other communities around us. Um, they hit on a bunch of different topics, Route 30 corridor, um, community opportunity, um, all types of different things. So, um, after they gave about an hour presentation, um, received a few questions from council. We recessed at 7:05 PM and I would be done.
Does anybody have any questions for Economic Development? Hearing them, they'll be on a service. And since Mr. Truca's not here, Kevin, you are the vice chair.
Yeah, Service Committee, back from 7:05 to 7:17 PM. Lisa Allseth, Kevin Myers, and Bruce Truca, chair, were present. Uh, topic one, the only topic was the water sewer leak insurance. Serveline, who offers a water leak insurance program to municipal utility customers, has updated the proposal presented to the city in January. Mayor Jeffrey Sir noted that that detector water leak can cost customers hundreds of dollars. He detailed the new proposal and noted that the rates have dropped from $1.10 a month to $0.65 a month for water leak protection. It would be an opt-out program, meaning that all of the city's utility customers would be automatically signed up and would then have the option to opt out of it. Committee members expressed reservations about that practice. The matter was continued until it can be learned how residents feel about the proposal. And Truca recessed at Service Committee at 7:17 PM.
Does anybody have any questions for Service Committee?
I actually don't real, I don't know. I guess it would be, it wouldn't be maybe it's more for the mayor to possibly check, but, um, I had just heard, uh, over the last day about an issue where a resident actually had had, uh, a water meter replaced and then after having that water meter replaced and having everything checked by, uh, local plumbing company with no leaks or nothing, they received a very hefty bill about almost triple what they normally get. So I was just curious, is that something that this would cover too?
Yeah, it would cover that. It would up over and above, uh, what their normal bill would be.
Okay.
So if your normal bill's $50 and you have $150.
Right.
You know, then, then that $100 gets covered.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure, clarify that.
Yeah, right after that meeting, which people didn't, you know, we said you want more information. I had two people the next day.
Okay.
That had, one had about a four-time normal bill, one had a $500 bill.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so, you know, we would have them covered, but, so I'm at, I, you know, so whatever you want to do on it.
Right. I just wanted to double check that that would be something, cause the fact there really wasn't a leak per se, but somehow there's a discrepancy in...
Yeah, and everybody should have received the information from Serveline. Uh, they were monitoring our last meeting and, uh, um, they, and I know everything. I think I forwarded that to you.
Yeah, you forwarded that to us, cause you, we even got her...
And if you have any other questions, just, you know, get with Ally from Serveline or myself. You have her email.
Okay.
I have her phone number too, so.
Thanks, sir. That's it. That was all.
Do I have any other comments, your questions for Economic or Services?
I, I, I was contacted by somebody that wanted to compliment our water rates. They said they filled their pool. They expected a $1,000 bill and it was only $100 for 10,000 gallon pool. They said they think our rates are great.
Moving on to...
That makes, sorry, but that makes no sense.
At all.
How big is a pool?
10,000 gallons.
A little kiddie pool?
That must've been estimated.
Okay.
The Finance, Mr. McKeever?
Yes, Finance Committee, back Thursday, July 9, from 7:18 to 7:37 PM. Members in attendance, Kevin Myers, Bruce Truca, James Mead, and myself, chair. Number one, Employee Service Manpower Ordinance at Council June 2nd meeting ordinance numbers 13-2020 and 14-2020, which would have repealed and replace existing employee and supervisor manpower ordinances failed to pass. The existing ordinances were referred back to committee on July 7. Committee members asked why the two ordinance, ordinances group city employees the way they do. Questions were also raised about why life insurance benefits are not available to all employees and why membership in the APSME union is not available to the handful employees in the manpower ordinances who are not union employees. Administration was asked to look into what it would cost to provide life insurance benefits to all city employees. Law Director Rob Bratle was reached by phone and asked if draft legislation could be written up, starting stating that the non-union employees listed in the manpower ordinance would receive the same percentage wage raise as agreed to in the latest APSME contract. Following a discussion on the wording to also include pay scales, Bratle said that it could be, that it could be. Myers made a motion to request such draft legislation with a second by need. Motion passed by voice vote. McKeever recessed Finance Committee at 7:37 PM.
Any questions for Finance Committee? Hang on, uh, Mr. Myers, the Ad hoc Committee on Council Rules and Procedure.
Yeah, we met from 7:43 to 7:47 PM. Uh, topic, uh, members present were Bruce Truca, Mark McKeever, myself as chair. Topic one, uh, Council Committee on Ad, or Ad hoc Committee on Council Rules and Procedure was called a special meeting on July 9, 2020, to begin and conclusion of the Visirus City Council General Regular Committees meeting for the limited purposes conducting a draft ordinance of any Visirus codified ordinance, chapters 111, 113. Topic two, chapters 111 and 113, a draft ordinance was distributed that included several changes to the Visirus codified ordinance, chapter 111, Council Rules of Council and chapter 113, Rules and Resolutions. The chair stated that he did review a May 25, 2020 letter from Vicki Deschawn of 1108 Hillcrest Drive detailing several items in an earlier draft that she stated were incorrect, along with the minutes of the June 18, 2020 meeting of the committee and the draft now before the committee. He further stated that he found every item that was outstanding from the earlier draft appeared to be corrected. Deschawn stated that the draft now before the committee was originally prepared by her, not the law director, and that the items outstanding from the earlier draft have been corrected. Deschawn further stated that the shades of black in the tightface of the draft now before the committee are inconsistent and added that she will provide her draft, which features consistent shading to council. McKeever made a motion to request final legislation as to, as so presented with a second by all set. Motion passed by voice vote. Um, quick question, Allseth, second half. She's not on the committee. Is that a typo or...
I will check the recording.
Okay. Uh, and then topic three, Myers adjourned the Ad hoc Committee on Council Rules and Procedure at 7:47. Motion.
Vote. Uh, any questions for the Ad hoc Committee?
I have a question for the law director pertaining to the Ad hoc Committee. Uh, have you seen a reason that this committee could not be disbanded at this time since we've accomplished the tasks that were requested of us?
I do not. I would, the only thing I would say...
I do not. The only thing I would say is that the legislation is pending and you don't have the votes of emergency yet, so we just won't wait.
Very good.
Do we still want to accept this even though it's got the Allseth thing on there?
Nope.
Not table that then?
Traffic Commission, Mr. Mayor?
Nothing to report tonight.
Need a minute, need a motion to accept all the minutes and committee reports except for the Ad-Hoc.
So.
Second. All favor. I oppose. Report of city officers, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, I've got no formal report, Mr. President. I, uh, just a couple things though I did want to mention. We thank Congressman Jordan for being in Fine City last Wednesday, spent most of the day meeting with local officials. We met with our acting police chief and our two captains who will be taking the chief's test. Kind of getting an idea, you know, what the local problems were in in law enforcement and myself, Mr. Ratliff, and then those, those three, plus congressmen were in on that meeting and what else? Today, spent most of, most of the day in a similar town of Visiter's. That's Bell Fountain. It's been kind of, had a downtown renaissance. And I'll have a more thorough report on that, some of the things that they've done and some of the things that we should be looking at at the next council meeting. So, that's all for today.
Any questions for the mayor?
I do.
Mr. McKeever?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, what's the situation with the city pool?
Well, if you can wait till number 12 of the Safety Service Director, I can go into that.
Okay.
Yeah? And I have good news to report, so just a little tease in there for you.
Any question, any other questions for the mayor? This will move on to Safety Service Director report.
Okay, so we've got Jeff's report, so in the process of meeting with contractors, we're utilizing the CARES Act where we can upgrade some of our facilities with hand-free doors. So we met with local businesses in the last week and getting estimates. Next two weeks, we hope to finish up three pick, more pickleball courts, thanks to Kiwanis. And we're waiting for the folks that can get there and put the fence in. That's what's holding it up right now. I have a big crowd, it's beautiful court shade in the morning, it's really nice.
We're also gonna, probably as part of that Kiwanis, we're gonna fix a building up that's just to the east of the court so that way it will be nicer and better for when people use it this summer and fall.
Great, thank you. Well, that's, that's even better.
The roof and some paint, make it look brand new again.
Very nice. Little League tournament, weekend 10th of, 11th to 12th. They had all four fields going. Big participation. Thank you for the Little League, it's, a lot of people were there. I was out there about till 9:30 that night. There were still a lot of action going on. The games were done, but people were cleaning up, so park's got a lot of use this summer. McKeever, Lynn McKeever, engineer, is finishing up the engineering and design for Stetzer Road Waterline. We hope to have that for you in the next couple of weeks. So that's, that's what's holding that up. The OPC money's now available for the project this year, and that was the State Route 98 water line. We discussed and approved last year, and that has been sent out to, I believe it was last year, maybe it was early this year, but that went to ODOT for their approval, then it goes on the EPA for their approval. And we hope that is a quick approval, we can go out to bed yet this summer. Border Control was last week. We ordered the wastewater treatment plant UV system, Detrogium Systems, they're from Canada. I think they were always a bit on, I believe. Mill and pave program will start the week of July 20th. And some, you know, Wetstone's gonna be done after the fair. Should be hopefully first on the list. But there's other, some other major streets in that too. The alley at Kroger's been kind of a problem. Kroger was unable to move the, the concrete barrier because they were gonna have to move underground tanks, it got to be very expensive and so we're gonna put in three steel posts filled with concrete and put the note through truck signs and hopefully that takes care of the property issue we've had with trucks damaging the building there.
When are you gonna do that?
Uh, that's gonna be done, I think we got, I think that's on the agenda for the next couple of weeks.
So we're gonna open the alley until then?
Uh, no, alley won't be open until we get that done, yeah. Alright, so we've submitted grants to FAA for airport projects, waiting for their review and approval, and it's a 100% grant. There's no matching funds issued, which is, saves us 5%. Dirt Dog, our contractor out on Hopley in that area, is still in town, they're finishing up some concrete work and doing some grass seeding. That's in Group 1, 2, and 3A. We have, Oberlanders have, working out by the Friendship Bridge, because of erosions, we've had some issues with some trees there that are some dangerous trees, and the bank washed out, and so we did some work there. Where Dillinger's gonna fix the ditch and put rip ramp in there. We're making signs right now for the Friendship Trail about what's allowed on the trail, no motorized, you know, four-wheelers and those types, no cars obviously, so right now we are gonna put a couple posts on the end there to keep larger, you know, like larger motorized three-wheel bikes, four-wheelers, those types of things off of there. Hopefully people will do that. The number 12, Mr. McKeever. The flange, well, we had a defective flange, it broke. Gave out over the weekend. And, and we parked, came in this afternoon, and it's now repaired. It will be, pool, pool will be open tomorrow as long as the chemicals balance, so that's the next thing, so. We will put a note out on Facebook tomorrow morning, so check Facebook about the opening. We'll test the chemicals and make sure it's safe. And we'll have an, we'll have an announcement hopefully by about, no later than about 11 o'clock on Facebook. Whether we're open or not, we anticipate being open though. Concession stands kind of an ongoing issue. It was due to be brought into compliance this week. Timeline was extended because OD and I required a review of the changes to our floodplain ordinance. And now we're soliciting quotes for the work right now, so. And as soon as we get those quotes, we get the approval from OD and I, we'll be good to go. We had some WASP issues out of Friendship Bridge, people being stung. Our, our very own law director, who was already, uh, he's actually proposed a lawsuit against the WASPs.
It was murder.
Yes.
So. Yeah, so if anybody sees WASP anywhere, ground hornets, this is time of year for those things. Hey, please let us know, just call up the city hall, let us know, 562-6767. And leave a message, whoever you talk to, they will get it to, we'll get it, make sure we it'll get to the parks. But we're checking it daily for WASP and other. So what do you got there?
WASPs ready for it.
WASPs, right, okay. So Mr. Ratliff took one for the team, so.
Three.
Three? Oh yeah. Yeah, well, okay, he's good to go though, thank goodness, so. You never want to sting a lawyer, you know, you never want to do that, so. Alright, I think that's it. Does Jeff have any questions for the Service Director?
I've got a multitude of questions.
Okay, here we go. I hope I can answer them.
I'm gonna go in order down your list, Mr. Mayor. Number one, until those doors can be updated, I would like to request that we come into compliance with the state fire code to keep all of the front doors down here unlocked. If there were an emergency, I noticed on tax day when the building was much busier, you can't get out if, and there's no signage, nor should you have to read signage if there were an emergency, if we're open, I'd like to see them all unlocked.
We did run that by the fire department.
I already made a phone call, the fire chief complaining about it.
Okay, what did he say?
He agreed with me that it is fire code that they need to be unlocked, but I also told him that we would be working to try to get.
Okay, well, okay, that's fine. I have no trouble with that. What we're trying to do is just make sure we sanitize everything.
I understand what your purpose was, but unfortunately I think, you know, and if there were an emergency, you know, people need to be able to get out.
I, I agree.
I'm glad that we're working towards getting new, new doors over there. Down to number seven, mill and pay program. Please, I just need your verification, because of what I've told some people to make sure I'm correct. Hopley is just a temporary, they're going to mill and pay that all back up there to be corrected.
Yeah, well.
That is like a spill-your-coffee kind of thing out there.
Yes and no. Hopley is not acceptable. We've met with the engineer, and they're gonna meet with the contractor and let him know.
Okay, so that is at some point.
They, they, we know about it, it's like a.
Just wanted to make sure.
It's a roller coaster going through.
Yeah. On number eight, I, and if you and I want to talk privately about this, we can, but we had talked about this in a traffic commission about a year or two ago about the building on Warren Street at the alley, and I had requested the exact same thing with Have Some Post, but then we were told we were not allowed to do that as a city.
The building be like the red, former Red Cross building?
No, it would be the old Crumb's Appliance Building. They had the same complaints, the trucks were hitting it.
Oh, sure, 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 sure.
So if we're going to now allow, because I was told at that traffic committee meeting that we could not, we as a city couldn't put anything in the right of way there. So if we're gonna do that up at Hungtown Garage, I would like to request that we revisit that for their building as well, since it's also had, you know, a multitude of recorded incidents there.
Yeah.
Do I need to just send a request to traffic commission?
Can you send an email?
Yeah.
Just send it to Jeff and I.
Yep, um, alright, and then three that weren't on there that I've had people ask about.
Okay.
We had, well, one I had asked you about in the previous meeting, if we would be able to move the, the speed trailer out to Wetstone for Fair Week right there where people cross the street.
It didn't, it didn't get outside?
Not there as of today.
I, I'm sorry.
Look into that.
I did make that request, I thought it was done.
Yep, and with the bike path. Was there a place, I, I went and looked and I couldn't find it. Was there a designated place that we were gonna put the item that the Rotary was donating to the city, the bicycle repair station? Have you designated a spot for that yet? Or did that get left out of the plans?
What bicycle repair station?
The Rotary, we came and talked to you about that. Rotary was gonna donate a bicycle repair station, and Branstad was here that day that we had that conversation, and they were gonna allow for a space for that.
Was that a recent conversation?
No, it was a while ago. We could chat more about it later. I, I looked and I couldn't find a spot for it.
I honestly, I don't remember, I, I'm sorry.
And then the last complaint, I've had a couple people call and ask, and I don't think they're against ice cream, but Mark's Ice Cream being taken up parking places all day long with the no parking sign in a parking space, that they don't feel that that's appropriate for a business to do that. Just wanted to convey that, and I kind of agree with that, that it's, it's, you know, if every business started going out and putting buckets in the street, that they were closing it off, we'd have nowhere left to park.
We'll look into that too.
That's my questions.
I have a question. Are our city workers back on 40 hours a week yet?
Not yet, no, no. We're waiting, they will be actually next week after.
How many hours are they, oh, okay, so starting next week, they're on 40 hours?
Depending on what happens at Congress, if Congress extends the the shared work program, they'll make some decisions after next week. We're not sure it's gonna be extended. But they will be, they'll be back to 40 next week.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Ratliff?
Thank you, sir. A couple of quick things, I just kind of laid an update. First, Purdue Pharmacy bankruptcy, which is the opioid, part of the opioid litigation, there's several of those. We, as a city, have to submit a claim by the end of the month. I assume nobody's opposed to us submitting a claim on that.
We already passed legislation allowing me to do that.
Yeah, so just that process is ongoing, we'll work with police to get some data, but that's for now. The Shova Washington Properties, which is Lucas Street and Blicky Street, have a part of our presentation tonight. Those did not sell at tax foreclosure, so the options are, and Mametech does not want them, or does it have any money? So the options are, we let them go back to the state and they sit there for who knows how long, or we take them and we find a solution. So I filed a verified claim through the court process for the city to take control of those. There has been some interest in the past on the Lucas Street property, and we'll reach out to some other business owners that may be loading the demo themselves. The Blicky Street, we're gonna have to deal with that, but we'll inspect it. As far as I know, nobody's been signed out in quite some time, so I, I don't know if it's a demo property or if it's one that's rehabable yet. But once we have ownership of it, we'll send the road in and find that out.
Have they been? What are you calling?
For closure? This one definitely is. The, the Blicky Street, we don't know. And once we have ownership tied to it, we'll, we'll send people in and inspect. If that one's repairable, then that may be something through CIC or some other program, we can get it in the hands of somebody that can that can invest in it and fix it up. Mentioned here before, we, we gotta preserve every house we can. So that's, that's one we just have to take a look at. Nobody's been in it for.
So when you say the city's taking it over, does that mean the CIC's taking it over, or do we have to, as a city, donate it to the CIC?
It'll, it'll come to the city first, and then depending on what the long-term solution for it is, we may retain ownership and demo it with our funds, or we may transfer it to CIC if there's a end-user or end-devolution guy. The one down here, I mean, it's surrounded, it's surrounded by commercial property, so I mean, it has a clear lot, it has some value, it does have good value right now. The one on Blicky Street, it's residential, it's a residential area. It's, it's in a, it's in a good area, I mean, you've got one area close to.
By the old Fuffians.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's also a deadened street, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, so it's close to.
Back to my hood.
It's close to the tracks, but I mean, it's, it's a neat area. Lastly, the manpower ordinance, you'll probably get an email from Tom tomorrow, I said it late to him today. Try to clean it up, try to include as much as we can. I really don't know that there's a way because, and we'll talk more about it Thursday, so I'm gonna be very well today. But it's kind of our best-case scenario, you have to keep it, combine it all into one with the Service Safety Director and everything all in one. The reason that used to be two is because it was not only the Service Safety Director, it was like four or five different supervisors that were non-union supervisors, so the last five years or so, those positions have all been eliminated. A lot of that work's been put on the Service Safety Director. And, you know, the elimination of those positions, so he was left on that by himself. So we moved it over and it's got all the different positions in it. So take a look at it, it's lengthy, and we can talk about it in detail on Thursday.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do. I was approached by a concerned parent whose daughter owns a house on the 800 block of High Street. There's a, a boat sitting in the.
On the street?
On the street. Has not moved for quite a, quite a while. And there's limited, very limited parking there anyhow between, I drove that just the other day. And the other concern was, and I'm not, I told her that I would find out, I'm not certain. There's three pools that are above ground also in, right around that.
With no boats.
That have no fencing. One, two of them right on the alley. I mean, they're right, and I don't even think they're as we had a hearing on a certain gentleman on Norris and Dusky who had defended, these pools are well in the right of me. So, two of them are. The other one is questionable, it has no fence. And the person at one of the houses, I won't, I just won't mention the address or anything, but they're concerned, they can't, you know, vehicles, they have no places to park because one boat is sitting there because it got moved out of the backyard because they put a pool in with no fence. So I believe there are ordinances in our zoning that says you have to have a fence.
Pools and fences are covered by the zoning officer, so I'll, I'll ask him to go out and take a look and start the appropriate process there.
I'll give you the address.
Boats on the street? Boats on the street, well, first stop would be the police department. Have them go check for, you know.
Did you, did you tell us an address?
No, I did not.
Will you send it to me?
I'll, I'll let you know.
And I'll take, I'll take care of that with the police department.
Interestingly enough, you know, 'cause another question came up this week about ponds. You have to have a fence for a pool, but not a pond.
Right. I have a question. When they put the, like, I guess it's a fence up on the top of the pool.
The locking fence around the top of the pool?
Yeah, that's considered a fence, right?
That covers it.
Locks is locking, is key usually.
In which most of the time, if you have insurance on your house, they're gonna require that anyways, or they're not gonna raise your insurance.
Oh, yeah. People get a pool after they've gotten insurance, so they don't think to call their insurance company.
Well, they, they're still alive.
Insurance.
Nope. I do have one question I forgot to ask the mayor. Crestline, I found out, has a open time as a pool for those over fifty-five. Is it possible that we could do that, too? Offer it like several days a week, just in the morning till, you know, maybe two or three hours prior to opening to the public?
We've talked about that, too.
Yeah. What the heck?
I was thinking about it, but I didn't say.
Hey, you're not hearing the same votes. I would just question, I forgot to ask that.
I'll check, let me check with Mr. Rostache and ask him how well attended it is, and then, you know.
Just, just a thought to see if we could offer it to, if you can name it.
Mr. Mayor?
The parking lot behind the Great Fox, I guess it's getting worse. I had a complaint today about it.
It'd be hard to imagine it getting much worse.
Okay.
You mean as far as the asphalt servicing?
Broken down cars, trash piled up.
Oh, trash and stuff. I haven't, I haven't looked at trash. I, I.
I haven't been back there, so I didn't know.
Yeah, I, I don't, I haven't seen it, been back there for looking at trash or anything. I'll have Mr. Grob take a look at it.
Are we paving that parking lot this year?
It was on the list, but I think it's been moved to hasn't it?
Because you did not get certain properties sold.
That's, that's general fund. It's, that's, that's not gonna make it.
We don't know we had an emergency that.
Yeah, it's still in the process, though.
Any last questions for the law director? Now, we, is this the first we've seen this report from the orders?
I think this, we got two weeks ago. It has to be accepted.
Okay, the motion to accept the file, okay. On favor?
I oppose.
And then as treasures, is this the first we've seen this?
Yes, that's been submitted to us, and that'll be up and going to us.
Okay. Does anybody here, are we up on the money, or taxes in?
Into money.
We'll have the report the first Monday of August.
I, I do have a question about the water. How is that working out with the water bills and people that were?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be sending a letter out with the next set of bills, letting them know when the penalties and the shut offs begin.
And there were availability for people to call and make payment arrangements?
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna certainly work with people. A lot of people know that shut offs are allowed now, so we've, we've seen people that are making payments, so.
Go ahead.
We don't have as many as we thought, you know, so.
Okay, moving on. No police report, no fire report. The motion to accept city officer reports.
Next.
Visitors input regarding standing or special committees and of city officers. Is anybody that needs to speak? No, there's not. They all left.
I do need these rest room real quickly.
Let's have a two-minute recess.
Thank you.
At.
I'll set my alarm.
Hurry.
Well, I'll be back.
You know there's one right here.
Hurry.
Put it over here.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Another thing I forgot was.
If you're leaving, like all of your carers, coming down Wetstone, I know we're talking about taking that light out. As I'm looking towards the high future, there's that pine tree that is really drew below and it struck interview.
Is that on Hepco property?
I don't know if it's theirs or if it's on that first house on, we have the right if it's, I think if you trim it up six feet up, 'cause that can be a difficulty.
Okay, so it is, it's actually on Hopley?
It's not one of those, I wanna figure out while I have to go to the restroom.
That situation where.
Yeah.
The Hometown Garage down there.
Yeah.
I've handled like three crashes there. The problem is, is the curb by the alley, it's not the trucks hitting the building. The trucks go to turn out of that alley, their back wheel goes up on that curb, and it tilts the top of the trailer into the top.
So put those posts there, so the hosts won't do that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be, that'd be somebody turning left.
Yeah, they're turning left.
So it's a back on the trailer?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so the.
Wow.
You know, you got the roadway, then the curb, you know, the back tire of the trailer gets it.
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to put like a twenty-foot post in.
Yeah.
All the way to the top.
Yeah, you'd have to go clear to the roof line. So if the curb comes out, then we'll be fine.
The curb's not gonna come out. I mean, down on, on.
On the, on the left, the curb or curb.
Yeah, so.
Do they ever answer back on the roadway or whatever?
They gotta move tanks, too, this is, so.
Really?
Yeah, so.
To ride the curb down?
Yeah, but it, but it's not that curb anyway, is it?
Yeah. It's the curb in the alley.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that puts a whole light on. Glad you said that.
I can meet you there.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm working tomorrow.
Okay, we'll, we'll go down there. Thank you.
I'm ready to ask for visitors input.
Thank you.
Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have one ordinance, ordinance number twenty-two, twenty twenty, an ordinance admitting and supplementing chapters one eleven, council, rules of council, and one thirteen, ordinances and resolutions of title three, legislative of part one, administrative code of the certified ordinances of the city of Bussiris for high. And that is, please be referred to the ad hoc committee.
The motion first accepted as the first reading.
Submove.
Second. On favor, say I.
I.
Oppose. That will be referred back to the ad hoc committee, public participation, any member of the general public. May present your input or comment on legislation for the first, second time. Nobody's here. Committee reports on pending legislation, ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc committee's favorable to ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty.
Motion to accept the ad hoc committee report.
Submove.
Second. On favor?
I.
Oppose. Consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
We have one ordinance, ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty, admitting and supplementing section one one five seven point zero two entitled Official Zoning District Map under chapter eleven fifty-seven entitled zoning districts and zoning district map under title nine entitled zoning districts and of front eleven entitled planning and zoning code of the certified ordinances of the city of Bussiris by the redesignation of the properties located at seventeen twenty-five, sixteen seventy-five, and nineteen fifty-five Hopley Avenue for partial numbers forty-four thirteen, eight hundred zero zero zero, forty-four hundred thirteen seventy-nine six thousand, forty-four hundred thirteen seventy-nine seven thousand, forty-four hundred thirteen seventy-nine nine thousand, forty-four hundred thirteen seventy-nine eight thousand, forty-four hundred six five zero six four thousand, forty-four hundred six five zero six five thousand, forty-four hundred six five zero six six thousand, four hundred sixty-five hundred four thousand, from ERE, the residential estate district, into GB, the general business district. And that has been favored by the, by the [inaudible].
The motion accepted as the second reading.
Submove.
Second. On favor?
I.
Oppose. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comment on legislation for the first, second, third time. There's nobody here to comment. So, that's it. Home business. New miscellaneous business. Anybody got any of that? Guess we got some music at the mural, the Shines Art Park on the new stage, July twenty-third, August sixth, and August twentieth, seven thirty p.m. Is there a movie coming up?
August twenty, or July twenty eighth, Tuesday night, sponsored by Kevin Myers, nationwide insurance agent.
Thank you.
July twenty eighth.
July twenty eighth.
At dusk.
On Tuesday.
He wouldn't let me pick a movie though.
On Tuesday, all those people that go camping and to the lake and have all those busy weekend plans.
Those people who got jobs.
They got jobs.
I'm just saying. Someone's getting up at three a.m. What's the movie?
Ever After.
Sounds like a love story.
It doesn't give respect.
He wouldn't let me pick a My Hero Academy movie.
Oh, okay.
The motion to excuse Mr. Krueger, he contacted us, and there is a valid reason why he's not here. Some of them.
Second.
Favor.
I.
Oppose. Joint regular committee meetings, what do we got?
We have two new referrals this evening. We have the two proposed traffic control map changes, that's from council of health and safety. And we have the appointment to replace Ms. Yocum on the tourism and visitors bureau, that's from council of economic development. Already in committee and on the agenda for Thursday is the, we have the public hearing of the concord, have a concord right rezoning proposal that is in back in planning committee to consider. And then we have the manpower ordinances or ordinance, as the case may be, that's in finance. Anything else between that you want on the agenda, let me know between now and eleven a.m. tomorrow.
Do we got the, they can move.
That's an open project. We can bring that up if you want.
We do have some info to share on that.
Okay, that was in.
Health and safety.
Health and safety.
Uh, the motion of adjournment.
Oh, wait, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Heaver.
Yes, I am notifying, I will not be here the first week of August. So, I will not be here for either the.
Make sure you get quarantined if you go out of state.
I'm not quarantined. I'm close to out of state, but I'm not out of state.
I won't be here the first week of September.
First week of September. I'll be here.
I'll not be here ever, so.
I'm going out of country.
Oh.
Nice.
I'll be able to get back soon.
Don't say stand.
Okay, the motion.
As long as I can stay at my star resort, I don't care.
Second.
On favor?
I.
Oppose. We are adjourned at eight oh three.